I'll call a meeting to order. Today is March 14th, 2017. This is a regular school board meeting of this date. It is being televised, by the way. And at this time, before we actually begin the meeting, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the family of John Keller. He's a, was a, is a former student support specialist who passed away, I believe, on Monday. And if you would just work with me on a moment of silence for Mr. Keller and his family. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have the presentation of the flag and the colors by the Sebastian River High School Navy Junior ROTC Program under the direction of Lieutenant Commander James Landis, United States Navy Retired and Master Gunner Sergeant Michael Hussey. Please.
Ready, two. Post. March.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to get an order, a motion for the, to adopt the orders of the day. Anyone like to move anything?
I'll make a motion to adopt the orders of the day.
Second?
In discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Five, five zero. There you go, Sean. That was a good call there, buddy. Okay. Next item will be the presentations, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two presentations. One video presentation. First, an award of a check to the Salvation Army from Casual for a Cause. Then, a musical rendition by some of our students, and then the video presentation. Mr. Flynn?
Good evening, Board. During the month of December, the, our partner for Casual for a Cause was the Salvation Army. And the Salvation Army is most known for their signature red kettles. Those red kettles were invented in 1891 by Salvation Army Captain Joseph McPhee. He was inspired to invent something to raise funds so he could provide free Christmas dinners for the destitute and poverty-stricken in San Francisco. So what started as one man's mission to feed a thousand of his city's poorest launched a tradition that spread across the United States and around the world. And our students, teachers, and staff carried on Captain McPhee's tradition to help others by participating in a district-wide dress-down day, which took place on December 8th. So tonight, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Jay Needham to come forward and accept this check on behalf of the district for $3,148.
On behalf of the Salvation Army, we'd like to say thank you and God bless you. This money will go to continue to do what it started to do many years ago in San Francisco, to clothe people that are hungry, to clothe people that are naked, give food to those who are hungry, women and children and men, to better support this community. So I say thank you on behalf of the Salvation Army and will continue to do the most good right here in Indian River County. Thank you.
Now, Board, if you'd like to come down for our musical presentation for the evening. Tonight, we have students from Liberty Magnet School under the direction of Ms. Sherry St. Peterey.
Hi. We're glad to be here this evening. These are students from our Eagle Sound Ensemble, which practices twice a week at Liberty, one day after school and one day, one morning before school. And we're going to be singing "The Star Spangled Banner" for you and then performing a song called "Peace Like a River", which I'm sure many of you will recognize. So if you would please stand for "The Star Spangled Banner".
And now, we have a brief video of some IB high school students that actually went to Liberty Magnet and helped some of their students work collaboratively on a project.
Today is the culmination of our current IB planner in second grade. We've been working on all sorts of different physical science standards. So today, we asked the IB students at the high school to come help us work with our students to rotate through five different stations where they can use their inquiry skills to explore some of the things they've learned with hands-on activities. One of the stations today is working with magnets. The students have different exploration activities, working with forces. One of the stations is making slime or ooblick and furthermore discussing whether or not the slime is a solid or a liquid. In one of the stations, we made ice cream so they could see the change from liquid to solid. We made a flashlight in one of the stations to go along with studying energy, electricity. And then the last station, they worked with force and motion and cars on different-sized ramps and predicting and then testing how far the cars would go on different-sized ramps and with different-sized pushes.
We came down to Liberty Magnet, which is another IB school, to help them with their final assessment as they're working on different aspects of science. By getting our students to come down and work with the younger students, it helps them to learn more about science and also they get to learn it from other students. So it's a win-win. They also get to work with young people and see, you know, how they're thinking and, you know, kind of reminds them of where they were, maybe, you know, 10 years ago.
Well, for my group, we were making slime, hence the apron. And we get to have a hands-on activity where we have glue, borax, and all of the kids, they get grossed out by it. But they're sitting there laughing and smiling the whole time. And it translates to high school because when they get older, they get an interest in science and they get to, you know, join us and have their own kind of fun. And they really get interested in learning about things.
For my group, we were building flashlights and a lot of kids were excited because they just liked the fact that once everything connected together, the light bulb would like turn on and they would all be amazed. And you could see their faces just light up. When I was younger, kids would come help me. So it's just fun to be like the older kid helping the younger ones now. To see the smiles on their faces when they're enjoying themselves and then just to see how like it makes their day better to do a fun activity, something different in school. It's just cool to watch.
So much of our learning is through inquiry and exploration. And today was a great opportunity for them to spend the entire morning in just the inquiry lessons. Of course, we have bookwork and reading and other things we have to do along the way. But today is an excellent example of what it's all about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it for presentations.
Okay. I want to take just a second. This is a little bit out of order because we've already approved this. But every, every meeting, we have issues where folks have donated money to the school district and we just sort of pass them over. And I would just like to mention three things tonight. Verro Beach Elementary received $1,200 from DonorsChoose.org. It's going to be used with the safety patrols and their trip to Universal Studios from the Georgie Warren Corporation. They gave $2,500 to Liberty Magnet School to support their golf tournament. And the Los Angeles Dodgers gave Dodger Town Elementary $5,000 for, to be distributed for needy students for books. And too often, we just pass that up. And that's big time for this community to contribute like that. So thank you.
One order, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We haven't approved the consent agenda yet, where that is. So.
Well, we got it.
It's coming up. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't approved that yet.
That's fine. Thank you very much. I appreciate your kind assistance there.
Yes, sir.
Don't know what I'd do without you. All right. The approval of the consent agenda, then? Let's have that.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, and.
Oh, excuse me. You have citizen input.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Seersey, you have citizen input.
Oh, we got to have that first? Oh, man. Okay.
Sir.
Do I have a second on this one? And we'll, we'll get citizen input then.
Mr. Seersey, I apologize. In the event someone has signed up to speak, which is to speak on an item on the consent agenda, if you recall, the new statute that was passed a couple of years ago requires that we take public comment first.
Okay.
I apologize.
I'll still let you approve, I mean, make the motion. All right, citizen input. First speaker is Liz Cannon, and she wants to speak at citizen input, not on the agenda item.
Good evening. Liz Cannon, President, IRCEA. I speak to you, I speak before you tonight in response to the article in which revealed the results of the administrator survey. The district and IRCEA have contract language in which we have agreed to form a committee comprised of teachers and administrators to jointly develop a survey instrument, which will allow teachers to provide feedback on the performance of their principal and/or other administrators at their school or worksite on an annual basis. When the survey results were compiled last May, IRCEA provided the superintendent with a binder containing the results of each administrator. IRCEA also provided each school with a CD containing the results for each site administrator. A binder containing the surveys is also located in our office, and any teacher is allowed to come to our office and review the results. We choose not to publish these results online as the purpose is for edification and reflection of leadership practices, not to hang administrators out to dry. Ironically, the day before this article came out, that committee met for this year. The teachers and administrators participating in this committee had very positive feedback developing this tool. But concerns were raised about the release of the results. I, too, had many concerns about the release of these results. First of all, as the group that administers these surveys, IRCEA was not contacted for comment regarding the results that were released by the district. There are issues we may have shared, such as that the committee did not meet last year and surveys were based on older questions, older survey questions frankly were a bit outdated. Furthermore, as the committee discovered this year, oftentimes when teachers make a selection on the positive side, they do not submit a comment. This leads many of the comments to be negative. I understand the need for public information, but viewing this survey in isolation provides the public with a biased view of the information. This article seemed less about sharing information with the public and more about the vicious attack on an individual principal as well as on an entire school. Finally, I have one other concern, the district's response to this attack. As I said earlier, Dr. Rendell was given the surveys last May. I have heard nothing regarding how the surveys were used, if at all, in addressing the teachers' concerns. Teachers who provided feedback on these surveys hope that their voices will be heard. Many are not feeling that happened. Additionally, this is one article which did contain inaccurate information. That did not make it to the fact check. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. The next speaker is, I believe, Jerry Lynn Castro. I didn't get it right, did I? Okay. How do you pronounce that name, please?
Jerry Leanne.
Jerry Leanne. Okay, I'm sorry.
Man, the guy's not here to help me. Hi. My name's Jerry Leanne. I'm from Kifford Middle School. I'm one of the first peer mentors for a peer mentoring program that was just started. I was here in a previous meeting talking about this program, but I felt like not much information was given to you guys. Most of it was how it affected me. And I really, I'm really concerned in this getting spreaded to the Verro Beach High School, so I'm here again. But I got you guys some reading homework, which I hope you guys will go through and think about it. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry Leanne.
I just want to kindly ask. I'm getting contacted by Ms., through Ms. Graffway or Ms. Decker, one of the principals that, one of the principals and/or staff of Kifford Middle School. And I would like some more information from you guys to see how I can spread it on because I'm really concerned in spreading this on with me to the high schools since I've been doing it for three years now. And I would like the school board's appreciation. I mean, sorry, support. Because I'm a student and I don't have that much things. But I hope you guys read it through and I hope you guys like it. I do have to give some credit to five of the peer mentors that we have under Ms. Graffway. I don't know their full names, but Callie, Vivian, Maddie, Emma, and me put it together and we presented it to one of the school board staff a couple, like a month ago. And, well, I'm here now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael, I believe it's Marsh.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure how you do it, state my name and address or just start talking?
Yes.
Okay.
Either way.
Thank you very much, members of the school board. I'd like to first, I'm a parent at Osceola Magnet School, also a proud PCA chair of the League of Extraordinary Gentlemen over at Osceola. Hello, Ms. Zork. I know you very well. I'm here, I want to tell you a success story and also an area of concern that I found. One of my daughters, both are in the room tonight. One is very exceptional. Last year, I was very fortunate that Ms. Pilar Gretto helped me out getting a 504 plan put in place for my daughter. She really, really needed it. This year, both my daughters attend Osceola Magnet School. There's a position there, I guess it's called Student Support Specialist. And I want to tell you how special that position is to me. My daughter probably couldn't tell you every day of the week right now, but she knows on Monday that her special buddy is going to pull her out and is going to have lunch with her. As a proud, single father, that means a lot to me. Now, I'm very active in the school as well as the county. And one day, I called up and I wanted to speak to Ms. Jill Robb. And I was told, well, she's not at that school today. Well, where is she then? Oh, she's over at the other school. I said, "The other school? What does that mean?" So I looked into it and sat down with the principal. And I said, "Well, first, I want to tell you, I can't believe what she's doing for my daughter because the improvement in the classroom is phenomenal." And this is coming from a person who, I don't believe in mental health, period. So the ESC department, they got the right people. So I sat with the principal and I said, "I don't understand this. You mean she's not here all the time? No, she's not. I guess because of the fact that there's not that full-time need at Osceola that she's spread in between the two schools." And I said, "Wait a second here. Now, how can she effectively really be there for these students on these 504 plans and these IEPs when she's only there one week, two days? Next week, maybe three days?" To me, and I don't understand all the legalities and anything about the school board, never even been to a meeting. So that made no sense to me. But then I listened to a principal who is equally as passionate that he wished that she would be there, too. So I said, "You know what? Let's reach out to the school board." And I just want to commend that every person I tried to speak to, I got a phone call back like that. So the school board does things very efficient around here, apparently. And I went all the way up the ladder because I wanted to know, I wanted someone to explain to me this ESC. And I was told, I guess, a child psychologist, student support specialist, and another position there. That's, that's how those roles are. They're not needed full-time. And I could understand the psychologist and this other position. But you know what? I don't know if I'm dating myself, but we had guidance councils when I was a kid. What's in these elementary schools now? I'll make it fast because I guess that's the timer going off.
Yes, sir, Mr. Seersey. The time is up.
Okay. But I really hope that you would look into having this as a full-time thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Mr. Marsh. The next speaker is Bill Wood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I attended the school district five-year strategic planning session. It was held last night. It was open to the public. My intent was to observe and preview the framework of the plan. I was surprised to find that the meeting shared very little on the plan other than introducing the consultants from the Ohio firm who were hired for $48,000 without board approval. Apparently expenditures less than $50,000 do not require board approval. Why are we hiring an out-of-state consulting company to produce the five-year plan when we have staff to do the job? Our curriculum and instruction department is staffed with curriculum and instruction professionals whose job descriptions include providing leadership and establishing new programs, developing annual goals and objectives, and preparing and insisting in the preparation of all required reports. The curriculum and instruction department staff receives over $600,000 in annual salaries and benefits. To do what? On March 3rd, I made a public records request for a copy of the middle school ESC inclusion program through Mr. Fidget. This plan would include program goals, objectives, procedures, and a method of evaluation of the plan at the end of the first year. To date, I have been told that the plan does not exist. Classroom teachers are required to write weekly lesson plans with clear learning objectives, procedures, and activities, curriculum standards cited, as well as an evaluation method for the lessons taught. Teachers are also required to complete their individual professional development plans annually. It's part of their annual evaluation. I did some quick calculations using district schedules and teacher input on the use of co-facilitating teachers, ESC teachers, and general education inclusion classes. The numbers are a cause of concern. A general ed teacher teaches six 49-minute, five classes, five days a week, and has one 49-minute planning period daily. They have 24.5 hours of contact time with their students weekly. Co-facilitating ESC teachers teach six classes, four days a week. They're not required to be in the classroom at the start of class and leave before the end of the class. If one were to estimate, they miss 10 minutes of instruction daily due to their open schedule. They have 15.6 hours of contact time with their ESC students weekly, a difference of 8.9 hours per week. Over the course of the school year, general education teachers have 40 more days of student class content time than ESC co-facilitating teachers currently. In sixth grade, reading, grade reading, social studies, and science inclusion classes, co-facilitating teachers do not provide ESC services to the students in the classroom. The general ed teacher is expected to provide those services. My last year of teaching, my assigned co-facilitating teacher never even met with me to discuss my students' progress throughout the year. He was only a name on a schedule, a ghost. These do, these numbers do not take into account when co-facilitating teachers are called from their teaching assignments to cover a class.
Pardon me, Mr. Seersey. The three minutes has expired. Thank you.
Wrap it up, Bill.
Could I, please?
How much longer you got?
Couple more paragraphs.
Okay.
Co-facilitating teachers are called from their teaching assignment to cover a class that did not have a substitute teacher assigned by the school district or to cover for school administrators who are away from the schools to attend district administrative meetings during school hours. General ed teachers have five 49-minute planning periods each week for a weekly total of 4.5 minutes, or four hours, five minutes, excuse me. ESC co-facilitating teachers have four 49-minute planned periods, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and all-day planning on Wednesday. and Friday, and all-day planning on Wednesday. This amounts to co-facilitating teachers having five hours and twenty-six minutes more planning time weekly, and twenty-four point five days more annually than general ed teachers. General ed teachers write the weekly lesson plans, including ESE modification required by student IEPs, prepare the daily lessons and all materials used during the lessons.
Let's wrap it up, Bill.
Write and grade their tests and enter student grades and progress reports. General ed teachers do not receive any additional compensation for the increased workload and certainly do not have a relaxed, um, teaching schedule. The middle school ESE inclusion program needs a plan.
Thank you, Bill.
It needs to be evaluated annually. Three more sentences.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next speaker is Bonnie Julin.
Um, two weeks ago, I spoke before the school board, and I was talking about student behavior in the classroom, and I kind of want to go back to that, and I don't have a lot of notes. I think I'm going to talk more off the cuff, um, because it is an emotional type of a conversation that most teachers have on a day-to-day basis, is student behavior. I brought out, um, two weeks ago that teachers were one time revered and honored, but now were powerless. And it has a lot to do with the student behavior and discipline in the school system. Um, oftentimes, students disrespect the teachers, not oftentimes, many times. They disrespect this, uh, teachers, use profanity, threaten them, and so on. And the teachers use a student behavior progression plan of removing that student from their classroom. They send them to another classroom, they send them to the office, they call the parents, they have parent conferences, but the student does return and the cycle continues, and that's where there's a problem. It's the cycle of abuse against the teachers on a constant basis. I'm sure you've heard of the old sa- saying, "Spare the rod and you spoil the child." And that kind of, when you go back to the old days, that meant you took a tree switch or a paddle, and you had firm consequences on the child. Well, those days are over with, but the concept is still there. Firm consequences for bad actions need to come immediately and swiftly. These behavior progression plans that the teachers are dictated to, that we must follow, that means the abusive cycle of the student coming back into the classroom and threatening us, and threatening the good students that want to learn, is consistent and constant. So, we must have firm consequences. We must take immediate action. Don't give these kids nine, ten, eleven, twelve chances to be removed from the classroom. First of all, they're given, um, lunch detentions, after-school detentions, Saturday detentions, and then possibly out-of-school suspension, once the behavior has escalated nine, ten, eleven, twelve times. Do you know what the students call out-of-school suspension?
Heaven.
Vacation. Three days of vacation, of kicking it back and playing their video games. The consequences are not firm enough for these students. I know that we learn from example. I know-
Mr. Circe, the three minutes has expired.
Kid, I will. I know that I have called a parent and said, "Johnny was disruptive in class." "Oh, Mrs. Julin, I'm so sorry, my child is not allowed to be rude to, to adults, but your child was." Why? That child learned from example. They saw that they, other children were allowed to abuse the teacher, and they learned from that example. They may not do it at home, but they get away with it in school. That's empowering to an eleven-year-old, that they can abuse an adult. I want to let you know, I don't like to be set up for failure, and I consider this a system of failure, when we allow these children to come back and repeatedly abuse adults. I'm sure you don't let your children abuse you. We allow the children in the school system to abuse professional people. We have to stop it.
Thank you, Ms. Julin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item, now, let's go to the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second about Mrs. Zork? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
If I have a question about the consent, do I do that now?
Is it about the consent?
Yes, I think so, it's under-
It was just voted on, but I'm sure he'd let you ask a question.
Okay. Under personnel recommendations, was this now the time to ask my question?
No, it was before, actually, it was when we, uh, had the opportunity to move an item from the, uh, consent agenda to the action agenda.
Okay. That's fine. I, I, I've never, um, made a, had a question, so.
Well, this has been kind of an unusual start tonight, so, uh, anyway, okay, uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, five zero. Thanks, Sean.
Yep.
Okay, the next item will be action item number one, approval of requests for additional funds for partial unity, unitary status negotiations. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In order for Hush Blackwell to continue discussions with council for the NAACP regarding the draft-proposed joint motion for partial unitary status, a budget is needed for January to June two thousand seventeen to cover negotiations and drafting fees. The cost of the work during this time period would be up to, but not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Therefore, we are seeking approval for spending authority of up to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I do have questions on this. Um, I was hoping that this-
Put the mic, Laura, please.
Okay, sorry. Chairman, I was, I was hoping that our superintendent could walk me back a little bit, since I wasn't on the board at the time. How we decided to hire this firm and how much have we paid them up to now, and is there a guiding plan going forward overall?
There is a guiding plan going forward overall. Um, the board directed me to pursue unitary status to find out, you know, how you go about pursuing unitary status, almost immediately upon taking this job over a year and a half ago. And so, I reached out to other superintendents in the state who might have gone through this process in the past, or were going through it at the present time. Um, St. John's County was going through a pursuit of unitary status at the time. Um, they recommended Hush Blackwell, the firm that we ended up, um, contracting with. There were some other firms that had done some work previously in Florida, but they were not actively engaged in this type of work at this time. Hush Blackwell was very well recommended by St. John's. St. John's has, um, gone a lot farther than we have, you know, they're like a year or two ahead of us in this process. And so, we, uh, explored a relationship with Hush Blackwell, entered into a contract with them. Um, this is something that the board directed me to do, like I said, eighteen months ago. Uh, we've been several steps in the process along the way. Um, each time that we've had to come to the board for approval to continue the process, you know, we've brought the amount, the estimated amount to the board for approval each time. Um, I believe that, you know, right now, if you see the letter in your back, up there waiting on word back from the NAACP as to the joint proposed motion for unitary status. Once we either get word back from them, or, or, um, there's a time limit, I believe, that Hush Blackwell has indicated, then they would give us their next steps. Um, but all the work associated with that would be under the, the cap that we have proposed.
Okay. Um, I have a question. I have a letter from January ninth from Hush Blackwell, is that how you say that? Um, it, it does mention in here that they suggest that the two parties work together, so I wanted to know, what are we doing to try to work together to help minimize some of these legal costs?
Well, it, it is a court case, so it is done lawyer to lawyer. Um, and so, right now, like I said, they, we have, Hush Blackwell has drafted a letter, uh, with a motion for joint unitaries, partially unitary status, and sent that to the NAACP's legal representative, and we're waiting for a response from them. That's the last information I have from Hush Blackwell.
Okay, so do we have an overall estimate of, from beginning to completion, from, from the attorneys of how much this is going to cost, and know how to look at a guiding post to where we are in the process?
Um, I can give you the amount of money that we have spent up to date, it's two-hundred-and-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty dollars and eighteen cents.
What was that, two-thirty?
Two-hundred-and-three, five-eighty, eighteen.
And how long, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound like I'm interrogating you, I just need to ask some questions. Um, how long normally St. John's, you said, were, were behind them?
I believe St. John's is, in a two-year period, they have achieved partially unitary status. But I, I'm not an expert on their case, but I, it sounds about right from talking with them.
And to hopefully get through this, so that we can come to unitary status, how long are we looking at?
Well, we've engaged in this process just about a year, so, in, in the process of researching and, and that kind of thing.
So in my four years, I'm hoping that we can get to that status, is that, you see that possible?
Uh, I'm not a legal expert, I wouldn't want to, to-
Chris Paul.
-take Mr. Black, Mr. Borkowski's job, but, uh, I believe it's within the realm of possibilities that would be in, in four years.
All right, thank you.
Dave.
Uh, I just wanted to comment, since I'm the, um, I guess, senior board member now, and I was from the beginning of the process, but before we actually decided on that, uh, when I first was, as I'm sure each one of you who, uh, is new, you get pulled aside by the attorney to bring you up to date, and, um, the desegregation order, which, again, this is a court case, so I want to be careful that I don't, um, trample any of the lawyer's issues, but the general thing is that this court order that was issued, it was basically for a student, but the local NAACP, and I'll have the lawyer correct me, if there's anything I say wrong, was, is the representative, and, or I should say, they were the complainant. We are the, um, respondents, I guess, and we have a court order against us for desegregation with rules and things on how to improve. Somehow, and it was previous boards, um, maybe there'd be a little work, a little composition of what we're doing to comply with the order and what we're not doing, and then it would kind of fall by the wayside. A general estimation, when I was put on the board in twenty thirteen, was that something like this would cost about a half a million dollars. And as you kick the can down the road, things don't get done, you can't see where we're at, and we, as we, as we have felt as a board and through studies, that we've received partial. Out of, and this where I may need to be corrected, out of the sixty-seven counties in Florida, there's maybe eight counties, and we are one of them, that has not received unitary status. That's a sad point of fact, but we are working, we are in the solution, and we are in the progress, so, um, then the two other board members, Mr. Circe and Mr. Frost, came on, and, and, um, with that composition of the board, we wanted to address it. We can hope that the NAACP and our views, uh, run in unison, but as with any court case, if there's a diversion or a discrepancy, that's where your costs, you might, we might find, so the cost and the time is probably not, I, we would hope, and we're going to work together, and our lawyer is talking to their lawyer, but that's kind of the history, unless I need to be corrected by Ms. Tiagresta. And I just thought I'd give some insight, since, um, we implemented, instead of kicking it down the, the road again, I will at least say that the board was proactive in saying, you know, "It's time to, uh, work towards unity, as, as slow as process, or how expensive process it may be," that our community deserves that.
And this, this court order has been in process for over fifty years, if I'm not mistaken. So it's time to, the progress that this school district has made over the years is, is unbelievable, and we need to bring this thing to as close to closure as we can. So, uh, you know, you can say, "Well, it's two-hundred thousand dollars divided by fifty years."
All right.
You know, not very much per year, but, uh, it needs to get done. I think both sides are ready to do it, and, uh, I commend superintendent for, uh, pushing ahead on it. I hate to see that big number, but it is attorneys, no, that's, uh-
Right. Well, I just, I just wanted to make sure if there's anything that both sides could do to work together to avoid some of the fees, that's, but I'm, I'm hearing that that's not-
Mr. Chair.
Uh, the draft, the, the draft joint motion is a step to settle some of this before we go to court, if I, is that correct?
Um, yes, sir. Uh, board members, the, the documentation that was already provided to the local representatives of the NAACP, as well as their, as their legal counsel, sets out some areas that we hope to be able to reach agreement on. Um, and we are waiting for a response from the NAACP local representatives, so that we can continue that work.
That's the way negotiations work, I guess, typically. Yes, ma'am.
That was actually-
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
Aye.
Thank you, Sean, I, I knew that was coming. Uh, the item B, approval to piggyback bid for the NJPA one-zero-zero-six-one-four CDW Technology Catalog to purchase classroom projectors from CDW-g. Uh, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item B, we're seeking approval to purchase three hundred classroom projectors. These will be used to replace failing projectors district-wide. Cost impact will be a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, five-hundred dollars. Um, this item will be funded through the zero-point-six voter-approved millage that is expiring. Mr. Green, any comments?
Um, just to thank the public again for the next two items, I want to be clear that these are both funded from the point-six voter-approved millage from two thousand twelve.
All right, I need a motion.
Motion.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, okay.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Um, I do have a question.
Okay.
For Mr. Green or Dr. Rendell. Um, over the last four years, how much have we spent of this point-six voter millage to, um, put in technology, a percentage?
Depends on what kind of technology you're talking about.
So, I-
How much of the six ten?
Because it was originally for, what, teacher technology and-
Textbooks.
Textbooks.
So, I can tell you of the point-six, point-three-five of that was carved out for technology, everything from upgrading terms, the green screen to focus, to upgrading classroom projectors. I would have to defer to Mr. Morrison in an amount, but out of the point-six, point-three-five each year is dedicated to, um, technology.
And we raise how much each year?
We raise about, in the past, roughly around eight million dollars.
Per year.
Per year. Um, and we also, um, included in the ballot language that we report back to the community how each dol- how, how that money is spent, and so, uh, what we would simply do is just aggregate those reports that we've had and get that information to you, Ms. Rendell.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's it.
Okay. Okay, uh, I have a motion. Mr. Sean, do you have anything on that?
Nope.
Okay, good man, you're doing good. Okay, um, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Five zero, very good, thanks, Sean. Uh, next item, approval to purchase audiovisual interactive upgrades for various schools from United Data Technologies through the state term contract, number eight-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero-one, or zero-nine dash one, the Epsom Indian River bid, number six-one-one-seven-one, and the Lee County RFP two, uh, R-one-two-seven-zero-three-five-JM. Mr. Superintendent, you might want to explain all of those numbers to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't know if I'm going to explain the numbers, but, and I don't see, we're seeking approval to upgrade a hundred-and-thirty-nine classrooms with interactive AV systems. These upgrades will allow students to interact directly with classroom technology for a more engaging instructional experience. The cost impact would be four-hundred-and-forty-thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and forty cents. Again, funded through the zero-point-six voter-approved millage. Mr. Green, this is a standardization of classroom technology, correct?
At elementary schools, yes.
Okay, I, I need a motion to approve. Uh, Ms. Zork.
I'll second.
Dale, okay. All right, any discussion?
Uh, I'm just saying.
Yes.
Yeah, you're not going to get any cheaper, it's through the state contract, and so, as far as the purchasing part of it, it's clean, and I have no problem with it. As far as the upgrades, I'm definitely in favor and support all the upgrades that we can do, especially through that millage.
Just a question, tell me what this is.
Yep, so-
What are we upgrading?
Yep, in two thousand six, and- Yep, in two thousand and six, and, and I tried to put a little background in your backup, you'll see a picture of it. In two thousand and six, we put in standard projectors across the district, and that would be a very much smaller version, but it's a projector that projects on a screen. Around two thousand and ten, the Title I department retrofitted Title I schools at the time with smart boards. So that changes the projector to one that students can come up to the board and touch and engage and drag the, the math figures around. Three or four kids can come up and touch at a time, so at the elementary, it's a hands-on experience. And that was a supplemental purchase for those Title I schools. Then along the way, our new construction standard became standardized. So the New Wing at Felsmere, which they were already a Title I school, but the New Wing at Treasure Coast, the New Wing that's being constructed at Beachland, they will all have the interactive projector for the elementary students. So this is an effort to get the remaining classrooms, for example, the other classrooms on the Beachland campus that won't have that. The other classrooms at Sebastian Elementary, who wasn't a Title I school at the time, those students do not have that same technology experience, and this is an effort with the help of our community to standardize that technology at elementary school for that hands-on touch technology.
So does it replace the smart boards or work in conjunction with them, or?
These actually put a projector that hang on the wall, it's a different kind, and the projector has the smart software built into it, and it projects right on their regular whiteboard that they use their marker for.
Okay. And we've eliminated regular old chalk, chalkboards?
We eliminated chalkboards around two thousand and eight, I believe, when we got those LCD projectors in.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
If you are a teacher, and you are working in a classroom that is older, and you've been told before that this technology won't work in your classroom for some reason, I have asked the question of Mr. Green and his staff that he will make it work. So I have been told, if you've been told before that you can't have this, that it won't work for whatever reason, he's going to find a way to make it work.
We had the vendor double-check and walk every one of those classrooms, and they have assured me with minor modifications that we can make every classroom a smart classroom.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything else? No further discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Sean?
Aye.
There you go, five, zero. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As was mentioned by one of the public speakers earlier, we are engaged in the information gathering stage of the strategic planning process. We did a contract with Patel for Kids, a nonprofit that is recognized across the country for doing this type of work. And so we are in the information gathering stage. They were here all day yesterday, all day today, and most of the day tomorrow, meeting with different interest groups in our community and different public groups in our community. The idea is that this strategic plan will guide the district for the next five years, and so as such, being such an important document or such an important piece of work, that we wanted our community to be a part of crafting the plan. So gathering all this input from different segments of our community is going to give us a bigger picture, a broader picture of what our community wants to see, our students know and be able to do when they graduate, and it'll help guide our work as we craft the plan. So we wanted to get information from all segments of the community that we impact and that impact us. So that's why we're in this information gathering stage. And I want to thank all those different members of the community who have participated in these information sessions. We've scheduled appointments with various groups and had to pull them out of their work for the day. We've had teacher interest groups, students, and other staff members all engaged in this process. So I really think that it's going to give us a broad base of knowledge, an input to help us craft the best plan that we can. The five-year strategic plan will guide our work, hopefully for the next five years, and so I think it's pretty important that we get the community involved. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Discussion session. I will yield to the ladies. First, Ms. Justice.
Sure. Today, I attended a county commission meeting, and I will get to that in Board Member Matters, but one of the things that they did that I really, really liked was that every time there was a presentation or someone was being congratulated for something or recognized, the entire board took part in the picture. So you lead us so well, Mr. Cersei, and I appreciate your leadership. When we recognize someone, I would imagine we recognize them as a board together. So I would just like to discuss the idea of everyone participating in the photos that are taken and congratulating all of the wonderful people that help and students that make the school district of Indian River County a great place to work and live and go to school. So I just want to talk about that with my fellow board members.
Good idea.
I was just going to say, we usually do for a lot of them, but on the simple, I'm handing you a check or something. I noticed that that has changed a little bit. When Carol Johnson was here, I believe, we all went up there, and I also believe when Matt was chair, we all went up. And when I was chair, we went up for some of them, but I have, I would say, I have no, you know, I agree, because sometimes I have, you know, I want to say, congratulations or something.
Yeah, I'd just like to be able to shake someone's hand, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Is Sean, I don't know if he's still there?
Sean, wake up.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay, just checking. You have any input on that?
No.
Okay, good.
I'm everybody else aside.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, I was just wondering if we can make a decision on that, have some consensus.
Well, this is just discussion, but I don't.
I don't know that it's something we have to vote on.
I don't think it's policy, it's just practice, right?
We can, yeah, okay.
Is that something that we're going to do, Mr. Chair?
I didn't see three nods on it, but.
I'm fine. I guess I can't wear my shorts back here anymore, so.
I have to actually get dressed now.
Dale?
You know, I, I, I don't see a problem with all of us going up there, but again, it's a consensus thing. If there's not, you know, I would certainly agree, Mrs. Justice, that it's certainly an esprit de corps thing. If we, it seems like the meetings, and I love the presentations and I love the musical, but if we're going to do it the long way, let's do it the long, right way, I would think, and, and we should all congratulate, but again, it's a consensus thing, you know, I'm not slighted if we don't, but that, if you were asking my input, I, I agree. I would love to be able to shake somebody's hand and congratulate them.
Actually, I will see if you had any other discussion items, but.
No.
Okay. Laura?
I would like to ask Dr. Rendell if there's any way that we as a board could have a presentation at one of the workshops on, or coming up on where we are in the process with the steering committee and the vocational and technology location and, and just the plans, where are we at this point right now? And I was hoping that maybe that could be in a upcoming workshop.
If we can't fit it into the next workshop, which is March twenty-eighth, if we can't fit it into that workshop, we can either do it as a presentation at a business meeting, or at least we could get, get you guys a written update as to where we're at with that plan. So I'll have to check the agenda for the March twenty-eighth workshop, it's pretty full. If we can't get it in then, you know, we'll communicate that information to the board either through a presentation at a business meeting or the next workshop, which won't be till late April.
Okay.
Anything else? Are you finished?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's such an awesome idea, thank you for bringing it up. I would just like to say that I'd be available for another workshop. I know we eliminated the discussion session, but I think there are probably, that's a great idea, and I think time is of the essence, and I don't know if any of my other board members would be interested, but perhaps we could, you know, in lieu of, we obviously just canceled the discussion session, but we could do a workshop and, and have this be presented, just a suggestion.
I'm fine with a presentation at a board meeting, or actually the information brought forward, and then I can certainly, if I had questions, contact you or your staff if I had any questions. So I'm fine with the presentation for all to see at a meeting. We certainly have, like we had today with the IB, that's fine with me. But I, you know, I mean, I love workshops and, but, you know, sometimes it's retread for me, but that's okay. If my other board members need, need it, that's fine, but, or just even, but I can certainly, for me, I just need to be brought up to date, and I think that's a valid point, Mrs. Zork. Being brought up to date is always good, but I don't need it always in a, for me, I don't always need it in the form of a workshop. Just a presentation and/or a packet for me to look at and bring forth questions, and I can do everything at this meeting. I find this meeting very comfortable for me.
I would also like, in that presentation, maybe to have, what is our budget that we're projecting for, for this project, and do we have plans how we're going to maintain it going forward? I don't know how far we are in the process. That's, that to me are some questions that, that I would like to ask early on so that whenever it comes time for approving this, you already have that information put together.
Yep. We'll share short-term and long-range plans.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the money that we've spent, or we're spending on the consultants, that's just the beginning, right?
We're talking about two different things, I think, Mr. Cersei.
On the long-range plan?
I think Mrs. Zork's talking about the CTE projects, you know, funding that would come from the zero point five millage for vocational training.
Oh, I missed that, okay.
And, you know, upgrading some CTE programs at the schools and also converting the ACE Center to Technical Center.
Okay, thank you. But you do bring up a good que, good, that concerns me. I'm hoping, on a different subject, that the forty-eight thousand is, that's it?
Correct, that's it.
Okay, for the.
The consultants.
For the.
Correct. If we'll have the plan, we'll be able to execute the plan after that. Our plan.
And there'll be a cost associated with that or not?
No.
No cost.
Okay.
Okay, you heard it first. You heard it first. No cost, okay.
Just one more item, and that's it. I'd just like to have an update. I want to, I want to ask Dr. Rendell, with the ten ninety-five issue that we have had in the past couple of weeks, are the company that sent these out, are they going to cover the cost of any actions that we need to take, for example, LifeLock or anything like that?
Correct. The, the company PlanSource is responsible for all of the data security breach protocols that will have to be in place and everything. And Dr. Fritz has been in contact with them. I don't know if Dr. Fritz, if you have an update or anything to share?
We actually have a phone conference with them at noon tomorrow to discuss this, and obviously they need to be accountable to cover any of the costs of any security breach software and what have you, in compliance with the statute and federal law.
Okay. I know that we, we utilize them through a company, Aon Hewitt, correct? So was there a cost associated with, was that on their behalf that they contracted with them, and then there's no cost to the district? Because if there was a cost to the district, I would sure hope that they would give us a refund for those services.
There was not a cost to the district.
Okay, thank you.
Have you determined exactly how many folks were involved?
Yes, one hundred and five.
I mean, as far as our, our employees?
One hundred and five. That, that's including retirees and employees who receive a ten ninety-five. So that's a number which represents about three point five percent of the people who receive insurance.
And after you have your meeting, will you then be in contact with each one of those folks and let them know what's happening so that they can not worry about their identity theft and all that good stuff?
So we will not only make direct contact with the people who are affected by it, but we also will make contact with the people who are not affected by it to let them know that their material has not been released. Actually, that was a request of the association, and we agree with that because, you know, some people want to make sure that everything was okay. So we plan to communicate with everybody.
Very good, thank you.
One more question. The ten ninety-five was issued because of the Affordable Care Act, and that was the form that they're supposed to keep in their record in case they're audited or whatever. It seems to me that we're going to have to reissue these because there is a lot of wrong information on those. So who is going to reissue these, and what manner are we going to send them out?
PlanSource will be doing a full reissuance of the forms, and they will be taking care of distributing those.
Are they going to go through the, the mail?
United States mail, just like the last time.
Okay. I, I just have a question because I think I, it was our W twos that went on the, the dock, is that how I, is that what it's called?
Docky delivery.
How come we would not place those under the same security? Because whenever that information goes out through the mail, I mean, there's always chances that someone else might get that information. So I'm just wondering, how easily would it be to put that on that secured system that we have?
So I've not had that conversation with Mr. Morrison, who manages the docky delivery system. I will say, the docky delivery system only is accessible to employees, not retirees, and we have about three hundred retirees who are on our plan as well. So at the very minimum, if we used docky delivery, we would have to send it by U.S. mail to the retirees.
Is that something that we might consider? How hard would that be, Mr. Morrison?
We could reach out to Docky Delivery and see if they would provide that service to us. So we can do that and follow up with the board.
Okay. But, wait. I just think that if we don't do it this year, I would like to see that procedure happen for the coming years, that we put it on that.
What procedure again, was that now?
Your W twos go into this dock, and then the employees can pull it up on the computer, and they can print that information out, and they have that there. It doesn't go through the mail, and it's a more, more secure way to receive information. So I just think if we have that ability to do that, why aren't we doing it with a ten ninety-five that has your name and your social security number on it? Why wouldn't we also be putting that onto that program?
That'd be up for those guys.
I think we'll explore that. I'm, I'm not sure, because we don't carry that information in our system, the information that's on the ten ninety-five, we don't have that information in our data system to put into docky delivery, correct?
What, what that would require, and again, I don't know if you can just upload a document to docky delivery like that, maybe you can. The material's gathered from multiple different sources, and so the third-party vendor is the one who gathers that together and assembles the forms. And so that process would necessitate them delivering those forms to us, us identifying where they get uploaded into the docky delivery system by person. It may actually require more manual labor than just sending them out, but it's something we can investigate. The other thing is, with regards to next year, there are proposed changes in the Federal Affordable Care Act that may not require distribution of ten ninety-five forms in the future, given that there are at least some proposals out there that have removed the, the mandate.
Maybe worth a look, see.
And I, I applaud you for bringing that up, but I just want to also say, as board corporate, when we address staff to check into stuff, that takes up staff hours, that's fine, but it should be a consensus. And additionally, and I have no problem, because I would agree with that, however, not to just do it. Under fifty thousand, the superintendent can go ahead and do that. So if there's a thought, that one person goes over and says, do this, and then it, they can do it, but it's at a cost, and we don't get to see it, and we didn't get to discuss it, I just wanted to caution all that, because every time we look over there, as, either one of us, any one of us, and say, could you check into that, that's man-hours, that's a soft-term dollar. And first of all, there should be, everybody wants to do that. I happen to agree that I would like to hear that. But I also would like to say that social security sends out yearly, an est, I think it's yearly or quarterly, it's a long way off for me, so, but anyway, it's, they send out an estimate with my social security on it in the mail. So the social security department is sending out something with my social security through U.S. mail. So I, I don't have a problem with people's documents. The fact that they're telling us they're straddling working employee versus retirement makes a logical section, but if you could securely send through dock, docky delivery, if I got that right, the working employee, I agree. And if you could do it with no cost, I agree. But I would want to caution, if it's at a cost, I would not be for that because, as I said, I'm getting my social security on a, on a sheet every year, and they seem to do it. So I have no problem if it stayed that way because it costs the district money.
Well, I am bringing this up under discussion, so when I ask questions, it is directed that way. I think it would be awkward to look this way and ask questions.
No, no, I jumped in because they said we'll look into it.
She had directed anybody to do anything, yeah.
Well, and really more, it was for staff because they were like, we'll look into it. Well, that's a lot of hours. You know, that, they're going, and I have the superintendent shaking his head. Every time we look over there and they say, "We'll look into it", it should be, we all agreed that this is something we'd like to see, if it's not a simple answer. Because that involves the outside company and all that, so I wanted to make sure.
Well, I don't know how we would know if it would be simple or the cost unless they looked into it.
It's the superintendent's right there.
Right. So...
I think that's what Dale is saying, and he can make a decision on that.
Right. But, um...
Not disputing what you're saying.
Right. And I, and that was a concern that was brought to me by the employees is the fact that it's, it's not that the employees don't trust themselves. They feel 100% confident that that information's safe within the employees and the retirees, but they're afraid if it was a wrong address or an old address, that it might, that's information that they don't want maybe perhaps the, those people to get. So I, it only made sense to look into, for me, it only made sense to look into. We already have the capability to put our W-2s there. I was just wanting to explore, why wouldn't we put our 1095s there? But like Dr. Fritz said, maybe next year we won't have to do this. And, and I don't think the social security office has your entire family's social security numbers on there too, if I'm correct. Whenever this...
It has mine.
Right.
And it's right there in the, you know, going through the mail.
But I, I can see it would be an extreme hassle if someone who, if it went to the wrong address and you have three children who are your dependents and someone went and filed their, their taxes and used your, those social security numbers on your dependents. It's, you know, there is a lot of fraud out there. So I just think if there's any way we could cut it off in the beginning without it costing us and utilize what we have.
100%, if it doesn't cost us anything, I agree 100%.
Mr. Superintendent, you could look into that and see...
Sir, I've gotten enough direction.
Yeah, okay. That's kind of what I thought. Okay, Laura, anything else?
I just wanted to speak to what Laura was talking about with this. So I think you're right. I mean, it's not without, within, it's not within the bounds of reason that perhaps with the screw-ups that's happened with this company, that perhaps they sent something to the wrong address. I don't think it's that far off. And I would just like to say that, well, it was not our, we did not cause this to happen. It is a crummy situation, and I am sorry for anyone that has had to deal with this. You know, so I just wanted to mention that. I, I understand that it's, was a bad situation. So I'm glad that we're doing everything we can to be kind and understanding and to fix it.
And protect our employees.
And protect our employees. Absolutely, sir.
Thank you guys for doing that, by the way. Anything else? Anything else, Sean? Wake up.
Nothing in discussion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I had, my item listed was the Board Audit Committee and Land Use Acquisition Committee. I would like to thank, and, and obviously, we're going to vote on this, but we don't have a full slate of folks yet. We have one application for the Land Use Acquisition Committee. Ms. Justice has recommended Carl...
Shira.
How do you pronounce that?
Shira.
Shira.
Okay, Carl. And, and then I have the Audit Committee. I have recommendations from Mr. Frost, Robert Alwater. My recommendation is for Gail Phillips Gilmore. And Laura Zork says Glenn Harons. I don't have them from the other two board members, so we really, and, and we're going to approve these or we're going to act on them at the next board meeting, by the way. So hopefully be ready. And I think, are we full on the Land Use Acquisition Committee now?
Yes, that will be the, that's the last one.
Mr. Chair, I still need to, to find someone for my looking, for my appointee.
Okay, so Sean's the only one, Judy, is that right? Okay. Okay, Sean, you got two weeks.
I'll, I'll just walk the streets and scconk with someone, kidnap them.
All right, a good deal.
I gave you two years, Mr. Frost.
So anyway, that's, that's the matters that I had right there, and we need to fill those committees out because we've got to, we've got to get cooking on that Audit Committee. That was a sort, that was decided by the Board Corporate, as Dale says.
Dale?
Dale says...
By the way, I'm waiting for an answer. I, I had one that could not do it, and I am waiting for an answer. And I'm glad, I don't want to say anything because they returned from vacation on Thursday, but I'm glad to see it wasn't one of yours, so I didn't know, I couldn't get through to him. But I'm glad to see, because he's a nice applicant, I hope he says yes, that you guys didn't scoop him up.
Well, I can only tell you that we've got three outstanding nominees for the Audit Committee so far. So you've got to go a long way to beat any of these. Get to work. Get to work. Okay, but we, we will be approving those or, or voting on them, I guess, at the next, at the next meeting. So you need to get your nominations in to, to Judy before next Friday. Is that right, Judy? Because the names will be on the agenda. No?
Actually, the next agenda, we will be putting out next Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. But we have until Friday, four committees, put out the final list.
Okay. You got that, Sean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good. So everybody's on board on that?
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a wonderful person that I had asked, and she had said it depended on how today went and how much more time she needed. And I think she has come back with a yes. So I would, how would I...
Audit Committee?
Right. How would I forward?
You already got yours on there.
I had found mine, yes.
Yeah.
But how could I forward her name on to the other remaining board members that might...
Give it to Judy.
Judy?
I need a legal on that.
Yes, Mrs. Zork, I would suggest that the application document that this individual filled out, if you can be sure, that's provided to Ms. Dang. Ms. Dang can make it available to, for all board members to take a look at and determine if they'd like to make that recommendation for their pick.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the right thing, because we just can't communicate because of sunshine law. All right, so we're set on that. We'll have all the recommendations in at least by a week from Friday. Any other items on discussion? Seeing none, let's go to the Board Member Matters. Start with you, Laura.
Well, I have thoroughly enjoyed going out and meeting the principals, going onto the campus, getting the tours, and just sitting down and listening to the principals and the dynamics of talking with them. And I did speak with Mr. Simpson, and one of his, I, I always ask, okay, what is on your wish list? And he did express a full-time student support specialist, I believe that's the name. And I had actually met with Mr. Morrison today, and I said, "How will I, how could I add that as a wish list onto the budget?" So I, I'm, I'm in the beginning phases of trying to figure out how to take those items and making sure that when we come together to look at the budget, that I really know what the needs of the district is. So I appreciate the schools, the principals for taking the time to meet with me. And I, okay, Judy, I probably have 10 more to go. So I'm, my goal is to meet with all the principals by March 28th because that's the first time that we're going to come together for the budget. So, so that's basically, and I've been meeting with teachers, and I've enjoyed sitting down and just listening to their concerns and how we can partner with them to be more successful in the classroom.
Keep a list and, and the cost for each one of those items. I just thought I'd mention that. Dale?
Thank you. I just want to say that I was very excited to see the Salvation Army here. That's been a personal family tradition at Christmas time. I started my child at six, and I would tell you, that's a little too young for bell ringing. It was not a good first year. But maybe seven or eight, just a two-hour slot, because all that money stays here in Indian River County. And although Mr. Fidgeon, and he probably got the bio from the Salvation Army, actually, it was started in England with a father-daughter. And it was coined a phrase, "Soldiers for Christ", and then he thought about it, and it's, so it was the Salvation Army. And then it was brought over here, and there are five districts. And what's really interesting is to hold office in the Salvation Army, as in Lieutenant Needham and Captain Needham, and they're married. You can only marry somebody in Salvation Army, you know, to be, to hold rank, to hold rank as a soldier for Christ. So it's a very dedicated, that, that's their feelings. To hold rank, first of all, you have to go off to their seminary school for two years. And then you, like any type of army or military, you raise in rank. And if you don't, if you want to marry someone, they have, they have to be of rank as well, or you have to resign, and then you can only be a volunteer for the Salvation Army or a paid employee. But to hold rank, you have to, you have to marry somebody in rank, which I think it's a really great family organization within. And then, as I said, they do so many things. And they also do the angel tree at Christmas. They do that through a storefront in the mall. And you can take for a child, anonymous child, it's sad to say, it's a numbered child, and you would take from the tree and then give back. So it's been a family pleasure to, to, to be involved. And it has such an interesting background. I just wanted to elaborate on that. The other thing I wanted to say is the Firefighters Fair is in town. And that's another organization that helps out not only the community, and the money stays in the community. But I worked the ticket booth for several hours because my son plays baseball and the Booster Club. What they do is they get each organization to work the ticket booth and the, you know, taking the tickets. And then what they do is they take some money and they pay the Booster Club for... So they're, they're contributing to our schools and to our functions and to our cheerleading and to our sports. And so besides being fun and a nice place where everybody gets together and, and sees each other, I just wanted to thank the firefighters for giving back to the community and allowing our, our youth to benefit from all their, their hard work. The, and, and they also get hours, you know, for volunteer hours too. So it's, it's, it works in so many ways for our community. I did, and I do want to say that we had a speaker tonight, and I will again, she left the last meeting. But I did agree with some of the things she said, and I believe it was Ms. Bonnie Gillian. And I do agree again, as I said the last time, our teachers are our last heroes. Our police officers are our last heroes. I will disagree, or I'll say that I agree that some students are inspired by classmates to be unruly and may not at home. But I truly believe that the majority are coming to school because that is what they are learning at home. And that's a hard thing for the stu-, for the teachers to fight. That change of ethic and courtesy that we don't have in the world and the community. So I, so I will agree that the students, the teachers have a very hard road to combat that. Just I agree in how they got there. Some, I think, is coming from home like that. And some are inspired by, if he can do it, why can't I do it? But I see that at jobs too. Suzie works this big, I work this much. I'm not coming down to her, so, you know, she's not coming up to me. So that's where people's worth, work ethics will be reduced, a lot of times in government jobs. So I, I agree that that happens in the class as well, when you see the other people do it. And when they're tasked with so many jobs and so many things and so many reports, and let's turn the book this heavy on Suzie, and here's this much I have, and so many benchmarks, it's really hard to, you know, get to the fundamentals of just teaching. And I remember that from years ago, from one of my kids' teacher, that just, when I sat in a little chair, and I've said this before, and they went, "Let me get to Eddie", and it was like, wow, and yeah, I wish we could just get back to teaching. And that is the shame. But I do hope with the streamlining, I do hope with the ACT being affected, I do hope with, you know, high-stakes testing and that our legislators recognize that we want less testing, that some of that time will be given back. So that's it for me.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start from this morning and then work my way back the two weeks. It's been a busy two weeks. This morning, I was at the County Commission, and I had the pleasure of watching the County Commission decide to sell the Vera Beach High, the, if you're not Vera Beach High School, the ball fields by the Vera Beach High School to the Jimmy Graves Foundation. And it was really awesome. It was this, I was so proud of the Vera Beach High School, and I think there were probably some San Ed students there, and Jimmy's friends were all there wearing T-shirts. I was so proud of them. They represented them, said their, themselves, the school, Jimmy so well. And I know Joe and Carol really moved by the community's support. And I think it was just a really good decision by the County Commission to keep that green space and to really honor Jimmy's memory. So, well done, and I hope that, you know, we can kind of follow that example in, in doing things that are best for the community. I just thought it was a great ending to that. I know we've discussed the ball fields a little bit, so, you know, good, good resolution to that. The best for Indian River County, without a doubt. I attended a Moonshot Breakfast that discussed MCAM, which is the Moonshot Community Action Network. And it is this group of really leaders, community leaders, who come from all of these different community groups. We have everything from Vera Beach Museum, Environmental Learning Center, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, all these different groups that come together and say, "How do we spread the message of literacy in our community? How do we make literacy the focus?" And so Molly Steinwald from the ELC spoke, Kelly Sartain from the Buggy Bunch spoke, Keith Touchberry from the Felsmere Police. So it's just, again, you know, so great to see this community rally around our students and our children. I always walk away from that really inspired. I attended a School Start Time Committee meeting. We continue to work on that again for the 2018-19 school year, maybe. And that group just got together and we discussed possibilities. What does it look like? What does, you know, what does transportation need? Again, we just continue to kind of work through that. There will be a survey, survey that's going to be put on the website, the Indian River County School District website. It's going to have maybe three proposed schedules, and then there will be room underneath all of those for people to provide input and feedback. I hope everyone takes the opportunity to do that. This only works if everyone is involved and gives their input. I attended a Taxpayers Association meeting. I really like attending those. Everyone is, no one's shy about giving their opinion about what's going on, and I love to hear that feedback, and they're always really welcoming. So that's wonderful. The best part of the past two weeks, I would have to say, was the volunteer reception that I attended last Friday here in this very room. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Poiselle and to Jevon for doing such a good job setting up the room and getting everything ready. It was really lovely. Mr. Cersei gave a lovely keynote address and welcomed everyone. There were volunteers from every school that were recognized. There was a student volunteer, a community volunteer, and a senior volunteer. That's awesome. It was great to see people be recognized for giving their time. So people were called up and, and they took a picture with the chair and Dr. Rendell, and I, it was just a wonderful thing. My kids were there and they got to watch that, and that spirit of giving back. You know, we, schools cannot do it alone, and our volunteers are so, so important. So I'm really glad we have that tradition. I don't know who started it. But kudos to them, and I hope that we continue it for a very long time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sean? Do you have any input?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do, I do. Thank you. I was, I, I attended the Very Special Arts Celebration at Indian River Charter High School, where they bring in the students from Obasso, and they do art together. And it really was inspiring to see how the two groups interacted and how they, you know, through kindness and sharing and art and creativity, they come to a better understanding of each other. And it really was fantastic to see, you know, district run schools and public charter schools working together. But beyond that, just students working together to make our community better. And then, of course, I, I'm joining you via telephone. One of the things I really wanted to hear tonight was some of the feedback on the unitary status. I was expecting to, to hear some community, but maybe, you know, how, how excited we are that African-American graduation rates are up 10% by working together. But I guess maybe that's too much to hope for, or, or some criticisms, we're, we work together. But I'm, I'm pleased that that process is moving forward. I did spend today in Tallahassee. On, on behalf of the school board, I was able to speak on two bills. The school-wide student calculation that passed. I, I believe it's House Bill 591 that was up in pre-K-12 Innovation Committee. And what that does is it would allow districts to use the school average for calculating cost per size rather than... to use the school average for calculating classroom size, rather than what we're using now, which is the class size, which is costing taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars and leading to inefficient schools and not necessarily producing a better education, so that passed, however, we have some work to do on the Senate side of the House for that, or the Senate side of the building with that. And then later in the day, supporting House Bill 773, which is the Fewer Better Tests, which pushed the testing back to the final three weeks of school, so the teachers have time to teach, students have time to learn, and also has a component where parents receive a report to help some, better help their child achieve, so that really is what it's about, and it also gives directions to the Department of Education to conduct a study as to whether ACT and SAT may be used in place of the 10th grade MSA. So, that has extremely good news, that passed out of committee unanimously with bipartisan support, so, you know, the legislature is starting to get it, parents, teachers, and students are ready for testing reform in 2017, we'll be here to see it happen, and with that, I close, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you very much, Sean, drive safely. I had a couple of things.
Absolutely.
You got some more, Sean?
Yes, absolutely.
No, sir, unless they have any questions for me.
Okay. I had a couple of things, I, I did have the privilege of speaking with the volunteers the other day, I thought it was kind of neat, our, where is our, our PI guy? Mr. Fidgen, he volunteered me to volunteer to speak to that group, and he gave me two minutes to give a three-minute talk, I tried to get it done, but it, but, but it was really neat to see the volunteers that we had and the excitement that was in that, that group. I read a little thing to them, we had, there's like the hours that were donated, 7786 total hours donated, 4132 hours donated by adults, 1991 hours donated by youth, 1663 hours donated by seniors, 11 adults donated 100 hours plus, seven youths donated 100 hours plus, seven seniors donated 100 hours plus, two adult volunteers each donated 500 hours, one adult volunteer donated 900 hours of service. One, this is, this is good now, one youth volunteer donated 1,000 hours. I think that he's still in school too, I'm not sure, but that's amazing to me, and, and we had one volunteer recognized by the White House for outstanding service, you know, Ms. Justice said it very nicely, that is really, really exciting, we've got folks that are interested in volunteering, and it was a pleasure to be there, Ms. Poiselle did a great job, because I, I've always told you guys that if you would put food there, you'll have a big crowd, and it, I mean, it worked the other day, they had plenty of food. Dale touched on the Firefighters Fair, that's a neat program, and I've been asked to touch on one thing, and that is the participation of probably 125 to 150 students will be involved in the swine, swine, that's pigs where I come from, showmanship arena on March the 15th, 7 o'clock, on March the 16th, the steer growing, grooming, I'm sorry, so if you ever want to watch a steer groom, you can go by there, the steer show is also on March 16th, and on March the 18th, they have the live auction, and I'm assuming, and I don't see the guy here, but I'm assuming, yes, he is, that's the steer auction, and pig auction, okay, and they're also having a silent auction, and the way you get in the silent auction, that's for citrus trees and poultry, they don't speak back to you, so you can go take care of that, but the, it, it, it's, it's a big deal for these kids that raise animals and raise citrus trees and poultry, and we need to participate in that all we can, and if you will put your money where your mouth is, they will let you go to the buyer appreciation den, which is at 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on March the 18th, but you, you have to commit to buy something, and I think it's probably a steer, or a pig, or an orange tree, or whatever. I had the privilege of, this was fun for me, throwing out the first baseball at the Cal Ripken Little League Opening Day Ceremony, and I hate to tell you this, but I was with three, three other folks, well, no, three folks, who had had professional experience in pitching, when they threw the ball, it got to the catcher, I didn't quite make it. I got it real close, and the guy was a good catcher, so he caught it, but we've got, I don't know, there were hundreds of kids over there, and, and that's, that's a big deal for us, but I have a more, really an important deal here, and I, I've been hearing about this discipline in our schools, and I had the privilege a while back of participating in a thing called a ropes course, and I don't know if any of y'all have ever heard of that, but it's, it's sort of a thing where you develop esprit de corps with your people, and I'm just wondering if we couldn't get some of these folks that are at odds with each other and, and, and put them through a ropes course, I don't know how much it would cost, but I, I just think that that builds esprit de corps, and Sean, if he's still on there, would appreciate that, but it, it's just, it, it's a thought, paddling doesn't work, they would say we can't do it anymore, this, this restorative justice thing, that may work, but this ropes course thing, I think it has some merit to it, so I'd, I'd like for us to, I'm talking, I'm not pointing, I'm just saying, I think it might be worth taking a look see at.
Mr. Chair.
And, and one other thing about the volunteers that I failed to say, we've got one neighborhood in this school district, or in this, this county, it's, it's called Indian River Club, they have 76 senior volunteers that, that worked with the Indian River Academy, and they want to take credit, they really don't want, they don't want to take credit, but they're gonna get credit tonight for helping to raise the school grade at Indian River Academy from an F to a C.
Yes.
Now, folks, I'm telling you, volunteering works, and, and we've got the volunteers to make it happen, but when you get 76 volunteers out of one subdivision, wow, that's outstanding. Okay, any, anybody else have anything else to say? Yes, ma'am?
Would you be interested in us doing a ropes course?
Wait a minute, what is a ropes course?
At first I thought this was what you were suggesting, I thought you were saying that we could do a ropes course as a board, to like build team-building and cohesiveness, and could we do a ropes course?
I'm just thinking more like kickboxing.
We could do kickboxing.
I'm gonna be out that day, but y'all could do that.
Kickboxing, come on.
I've been to the ropes course, and the only problem I had was falling backwards and letting somebody catch me, and I've got a little bit of concern about-
No, no, I'll catch you, I promise, let's try it.
Anything else? Yeah, you know, there's something neat about being able to smile after all this harangue that we have up here, and, and I just, I like it, and, and picket each other and, and end up the meeting on a very high note, so thank you, board members, for doing that. Sean, if you're still there, should have been here tonight, okay, good deal. Anything else, Mr. Superintendent?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent's closing?
No closing.
No closing, all right, good deal, well, I declare this meeting adjourned.